meeting. If you can all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask everyone to remain standing for a moment of silence for all of those who serve in our military, both home and abroad. Thank you very much. Clerk Samino, could we have a roll call just to begin the meeting?
Councilor Berika.
Here.
Councilor Flaherty.
Here.
Councilor Hume will not be attending this evening. Councilor Maglio.
Here.
Councilor Moran.
Here.
Councilor Quilty.
Here.
Councilor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilor Ringus.
Here.
Councilor Ryan will not be attending this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. Moving on to announcements. Does any counselor have any announcements they would like to make? I'll begin with that. Councilor Berika.
Thank you very much. I have two announcements. The first is there will be a seasonal family flu clinic that is going to be held on Sunday, October 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. right here in the auditorium at Town Hall. This is first come, first served. The clinic will be offered to adults 18 years and older and also to students in grades five through 12. Please bring your health insurance card. Again, get your flu shot, don't forget. Sunday, October 6th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. Children, grades five through high school, and then adults 18 and older. Second announcement this evening is from resident Elizabeth Inglis. She is going to be starting a new holiday tradition here in Braintree. It will be called Braintree's Festival of Trees. The Festival of Trees is looking to bring new light to Braintree. The festival is a fundraiser that will be held annually around the holiday season to establish funds to help improve the lives of Braintree residents. Braintree's Festival of Trees is a four-day family event that will offer 40-plus beautiful, artificial holiday trees that will be donated and decorated by local businesses, garden centers, clubs, and individuals, each with unique themes, ornaments, decorations, and gifts. The trees will fill Cahill Auditorium at Town Hall and make a wonderful spectacle of holiday joy before they are raffled off to the lucky winners. Save the date. The Festival of Trees will be on Thursday, December 5th, and will continue through the weekend. It will wrap up on Sunday, December 8th. If you are interested in volunteering, if you are interested in participating or purchasing a tree, please email Elizabeth at B F O trees, B F O trees at gmail dot com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Berika. Councilor Flaherty.
Thank you. So first of all, residents who requested early vote-by-mail or absentee vote-by-mail ballots by or before September 30th have all been mailed out as of today, October 1st, and over 6,000 ballots have been mailed out. Early voting begins in Cahill Auditorium on October 19th and runs through November 1st during normal business hours, including Saturday and Sunday from 8:30 to 1:00 p.m. Also, on Wednesday, October 2nd, which is tomorrow, there will be a community meeting concerning the lithium-ion battery storage that's proposed by Beld and Convergent Energy. It will be held at St. Catherine's Church, which is at 119 Common Street in Braintree. This is a really great opportunity for residents to ask questions and learn more about the proposal that's come before the planning board. So I invite you all to attend. I think it can be pretty informational and hopefully we'll all get a little bit of an education. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Any other announcements, counselors? Seeing none. Moving on to our approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 4th, 2024, and September 17th, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Councilor Berika, a second by Councilor Flaherty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Moving on to Old Business, 24048, Mayor, Local Option for Prudent Investor Rule or Taking Up Any Action Relative There Too. I would begin this by referring to Councilor Berika, the chairwoman of the Committee of Ways and Means for recommendation on this order.
Thank you very much, President Ringus. The committee met last week on September 23rd and voted unanimously in favor of this for the full council.
Thank you, Councilor Berika. Would anyone from the mayor's office like to speak on the order?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to briefly present this motion. Mike Esmond, I'm the Director of Municipal Finance. The motion in front of you today, this evening, is really the first of several steps that, and I should say, I'm sorry, I'm joined by Christina O'Connell, who is our treasurer collector, who might be able to answer any more technical questions or help me at least. But this is the first of several steps that we are taking as we are conducting a review of the, and potentially some changes to the nature in which the trust funds that are entrusted with the town are managed. The prudent investor standard is one that has been authorized in state law and accepted by many communities as a way to enhance the earnings potential, the investment potential for the funds that are entrusted with those communities. The standard that is essentially by statute is that default historically has been somewhat limiting in the ability for those funds to be invested in the most advantageous way to generate, to generate returns while also doing it as conservatively cautiously as the funds, the trusts would require. Really, this is not really the town taking on any more risk by adopting this rule. It's just helping to enhance our ability to, as I said, drive greater returns for funds that the town manages. As Christina and I are working with financial institutions and looking at where these funds are invested, we've had the opportunity to discuss this with, with one of those institutions who strongly recommended that the town consider adopting this now as we start to look at potentially other, this amongst other changes that we're doing for how we manage the trusts that we do manage. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from members of the council? Look at that.
Good evening, Director. Thank you very much for your brief explanation. I know we had a pretty extensive conversation at the Ways and Means Committee meeting last week for the benefits, some of the benefits, and I think it's important also, I think it's a very, no pun intended here, but prudent move on the town, on your part, along with the treasurer, to remove limitations to how investment options can be pursued, as well as it removes, it enhances your ability to multiply your investments by combining together different vehicles of investment. It also eliminates, gives you a great opportunity to eliminate certain fees as well by now having a much larger capacity to bundle an investment. And as you, I think was very important also, as another benefit, is it doesn't create more risk than already is inherent in investments by nature. So I think this is a very good move by the town. I think the institute who had provided that request or provided that suggestion is, they're earning their money. They're earning their money and as a benefit to us as a community and as a customer. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Reynolds. Any further comments or questions, members of the council? Thank you very much. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Yes. The motion is that the town does and hereby accepts the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 203(c) and authorizes a trustee of the town's previously established trust funds as authorized by Chapter 32(b), Section 20, General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 54, and General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 55, 55(a) and 55(b) of the general laws, as amended to invest and reinvest the monies in such fund in accordance with the prudent investor rule established under Chapter 203(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Thank you, Councilor Berika. A motion by Councilor Berika. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Councilor Flaherty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Moving on to 24049, Mayor, Local Option for Adoption of Chapter 33, Section 59, Military Leave Benefits or Taking Up Any Action Relative There Too. I would first refer to Councilor Berika, Chairwoman of the Committee of Ways and Means for recommendation on this order.
Thank you very much, Councilor Ringus. We met again on September 23rd. The committee voted unanimously in favor of this as well, and we did receive a letter of support. I want to thank one of our local firefighters, Katie Dracchio, for taking the time. She's also an Army reservist to write into the council, educating us on this matter. And we also had the fire chief with us as well at the Ways and Means Committee. And again, full unanimous support from the committee on this, on this item.
Thank you, Councilor Berika. Would anyone from the mayor's office like to speak on order 24049?
Thank you. Just as, as we noted in the Ways and Means Committee and in the memo, the mayor's memo that we filed, really this motion that's in front of you really brings current town practice in line with what's authorized in MGL. We are, we do not have, there's probably maybe three, four reservists or employees a year, I should say, that are, that might take advantage of this, but it's an important and we think a critical tool for us to have in place and ensure that the men and women who serve, I mean, who are eligible for these benefits, continue to receive them as we currently do in our practice. And as we note, this was reflecting, right now this motion will reflect the MGL as last adopted in 2014, but is structured so that if it was further amended by the state legislature, that would, any changes would remain in effect until the town council took further action. See if there's any questions. And Christina, again, can also help me if there's anything specific.
Thank you very much. Any members of the council like to speak on this order? Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the education of some of the folks in the community who are watching, or some of the folks here tonight, could you just explain, I'm a big advocate of this, being a reservist myself at one point, and I know the town treasurer was a military member as well, and thank you for your service. This is a really important element to the folks who work for our community, but just folks who work, who hold down civilian jobs, but also answer the call for our nation's military needs, which is, you know, fundamental to maintaining our way of life in this country. And this is a very small measure from what my understanding of how this process now will work in the town of Braintree. Perhaps you could just explain that this is an augmentation of lost salaries, or is this something that you're providing their salary while they're gone above and beyond what they're making as a reservist while on active duty?
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. To allow me to clarify, Christina O'Connell, town treasurer and collector, and to your question, Chapter 33, Section 59, it does, it has a couple of facets to it, and it does allow for augmentation in something called a reserve differential. So when an active, when a military reservist who's on the rolls of a municipality goes on active duty, depending on the purpose of active duty, this, the adoption of this general law will allow them to be paid in a certain way. So if they are activated for training, it allows them to retain in full their municipal paycheck for a period of up to 40 days. So it's great. They don't get harmed. They do also get training pay from the military, but that's somewhat not necessarily relevant. This general law just says that for a period of up to 40 days, we will allow you to retain in full your municipal paycheck. So again, that's up to 40 days. We recognize that by enacting this, we will need to shore up our internal policies and procedures to ensure that we track those 40 days and make sure that no one goes over, but we are putting a system in place for that. Secondarily, it also allows those military reservists for periods over 40 days, or for those reservists who are activated for operational support, to get what's called a reserve differential. This is very common. The reserve differential can be calculated in a variety of ways, but if you enact this law, it will be calculated in a way frankly most advantageous to the service member, which allows them to use the base pay for their military pay and all of their pays, total compensation, for their municipal pay. So you calculate the difference, and that's what they get, in addition to their military pay. So that's for those being deployed operationally, not for training purposes. There is one more, I'm gonna call it obscure, but more rarely used component of MGL, of this section of the MGL, which is for those National Guard members who are deployed under a certain title of the United States Code. So those who are deemed, I believe, under Title 10, who, those National Guard members who are activated under Title 10 of the United States Code are allowed to get a certain pay under this statute. Again, very rare. Title 10 of the United States Code is a deployment activated by the President of the United States, as opposed to, most National Guard members are deployed under Title 32, which is activation by the governor, which is what you typically see in a National Guard. But if they're deployed by the president, probably, you know, well, I wouldn't speculate, but I would imagine Acts of War, some national, like Hurricane Katrina type of event where they have to be activated, that would probably be an activation by the president, which would trigger them to be allowed to be paid under this statute where they would not, they would be receiving pay without any loss, so they'd get full pay. Again, that's somewhat unusual, but that would also be included in this. So those are the, I forgot, sums it up?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything further from members of the council? Seeing none. I did want to just read into the record because I think it's important. Katie Dracchio, who Councilor Berika referenced, is a firefighter as well as an Army reservist in town and did submit a letter in support. And she wrote to Clerk Samino and was distributed to all council members. "I hope this email finds you well. As a firefighter in our community and a proud Army reservist, I am writing to respectfully request the council's support in formally adopting the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 33, Section 59. This law protects the employment rights of military reservists and National Guard members in showing they are not financially disadvantaged while serving our country. Our town has always been a community that honors service and commitment, and this is an opportunity to further strengthen that tradition. By supporting MGL, Chapter 33, Section 59, we not only comply with state law, but also recognize the invaluable contributions that military reservists and National Guard members bring to their civilian careers in our town. Employing reservists and National Guard members offers unique benefits to our workforce. These individuals are trained to be adaptable, disciplined, and mission-focused, qualities that directly enhance their performance in civilian roles, including public service jobs like firefighting, law enforcement, and other town services. Their ability to manage high-pressure situations and their dedication to service are assets that directly contribute to the safety and well-being of our community. However, reservists and National Guard members often face personal and professional challenges when they are called to serve. They frequently leave behind their families, jobs, and the security of daily life to fulfill their military duties. During deployments, these individuals experience a loss of income, added stress, and increased responsibilities upon their return. Supporting this ensures that they can continue their service without the fear of financial hardship or job insecurity. By formally adopting Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 33, Section 59, our town will affirm its commitment to supporting the men and women who serve both our country and our community. This law ensures that they have the security they need to serve without unnecessary burdens, and in doing so, it fosters an environment where their service is valued and supported at every level. Thank you for considering this request. I am confident that with the council's support, we can continue to uphold the town's values of service, commitment, and community. Sincerely, Katie Dracchio, firefighter, town of Braintree, Army reservist." I think she said it much better than I could have said, so I do support this tonight and obviously thank Ms. Dracchio for her service both here in the town and for our country. With that said, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. That the town votes and hereby accepts the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 33, Section 59, establishing salary, leave, and related allowances and compensation for town employees for time deployed in the service of the armed forces of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or a reserve component of the armed forces of the United States consistent with said statute as may be amended from time to time. And further, any benefits to be paid pursuant to the acceptance of this statute shall take full, shall take effect in fiscal year 2025.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Councilor Berika, a second by Councilor Flaherty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Moving on to 24050, Council President, Chapter 134 of the Acts of 2008, Extension or Take Up Any Action Relative There Too. I would refer to Councilor Berika once again, the Chairwoman of the Committee of Ways and Means, her recommendation on this order.
Thank you very much. Again, the committee met on this last week, and we are sending it to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation. This is coming from the council president, so just for a little bit of information, extending this law, it allows property tax relief for any reservist or member of the National Guard for the amount of time that they're called into active duty and deployed to a foreign country. So for example, if you were called into duty and serving overseas for half of the year, you would only pay half of whatever your property taxes are for the time you were away. So again, we were sending this to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I think the wholehearted support of the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Berika. I would also note that in 2010, former counselor Dan Clifford, who recently passed away but was a fierce advocate for those serving and veterans in our town, had made the motion to extend this, and this has been favorably voted by the council to be extended ever since 2010 now, going forward, you know, 14 years. Would anyone from the mayor's office like to speak on order 24050?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the only point that had come up that we had made beyond in support of this, obviously, I should say, is just to note that in checking our historical records, we didn't find any case where a resident had applied for this and received it. But we didn't want to speculate whether or not that was due to no one actually being eligible or whether it was an awareness thing. So I, I think, you know, that, that fact doesn't necessarily mean that nobody was ever eligible, and we think it's obviously an important benefit that should be the case that it needed. We'd want to keep it as another option and benefit for the men and women who serve.
Thank you very much. Would any council member like to speak on orders zero, order 24050? Councilor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the community, the mayor's office, her, her team, and the Ways and Means Committee, and to this body for supporting such an important benefit to folks who have been uprooted and who have volunteered for this type of service but who have answered the call of their country as a citizen soldier, or sailor, or airman, or marine, that this town, as usual, stands 100% with our veterans and with our military service members. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Reynolds. Councilor Maglio?
Thank you. I have a question regarding the folks that may not have known that this was available to them. I remember we talked a little bit about whether it's retroactive or not, and I don't remember where we landed on that.
I think, to be honest with you, counsel, I'm not sure if I can answer that for sure. I know, I know that when the law was written, it allowed it to be retroactive, but I think we'd probably have to look at the cases and circumstances to get back to, for that. I certainly think it's, as in talking with the assessor's office, we weren't aware of anyone who had ever actually sought or saw information on it, applied, and then was declined or otherwise. So, you know, it's something I think as we, on a case-by-case basis, we would certainly look at it, but we could certainly do more research and make sure we get a legal opinion about that.
So if someone's watching this or they hear about this and they say, wow, I was activated two years ago, it would be worth it for them to come and see who?
Certainly, they could contact myself as a person. And it may be, that could be the service was actually many years ago, to be honest with you. That, that may be the case. So we would have to look up and understand, you know, it might take us some time to research and work with that person, but certainly I would encourage any, any resident who felt they applied to reach out to us.
Great. Thank you. That's all.
Anything further from members of the council? Seeing none. Thank you. Do I have a motion to this order, 24050?
Yes, Mr. President. To extend Chapter 134 of the Acts of 2008 of the Massachusetts General Laws through fiscal year 2028, at which time the town council may vote to extend Chapter 134 of the Acts of 2008.
I have a motion by Councilor Berika. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by Councilor Flaherty. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Moving on to 24056, National Grid petition, Cora Street or Taking Up Any Action Relative There Too, which was renumbered initially from 24046. I would refer to Councilor Flaherty, the Chairwoman of the Committee of the Department of Public Works, her recommendation on 24056.
The Committee on the Department of Public Works met earlier this evening and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on order 24056.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty. Would anyone from the mayor's office or DPW like to speak on order 24056? Seeing none. Any, any questions or comments, members of the council? Councilor Quilty?
I would just like to say at the DPW committee meeting tonight, I was able to speak with Jim Ossenalt and John Thompson from the DPW and also Mayor Jim Arseneault and John Thompson from the DPW and also Mary Meloni from National Grid. This project is kind of near and dear to my heart because it's in my district and it's also in my neighborhood. They were really good. They answered questions for me about, you know, when approximate start date would be, realistically, how long it would take, the work hours, notification to the neighborhood, restoration plan, and also a contact for the project. So thank you again for that.
Thank you, Council Quilty. Any other comments or questions from members of the council? Seeing none, I would look for a motion on 24056. And as realized, I don't have to read this tonight.
I will read this. Everybody, stay tuned. It's a long one. Motion to grant National Grid permission to relay 180 feet of 12-inch coated steel, 1954, Main and Grove Street, with 210 feet of 12-inch coated steel using a jack-boor technique underneath CSX Railroad with staff recommendations. Beld. Beld has no conflict with this location. DPW. The DPW has reviewed the subject petition and accompanying plans to relay a small portion of gas main on Grove Street beneath the MBTA grade crossing. Approximately 210 feet of 12-inch coated steel, Main, 1954, will be replaced in kind via a jack-and-boor technique beneath the tracks adjacent to the town of Braintree-Wamuth border. This portion of Grove Street is not subject to the excavation moratorium, having been resurfaced by lay in 2011. As such, the DPW recommends that if the petition is approved, it contains the following conditions. Temporary patches shall be placed immediately after the work. Street excavation should be saw-cut, backfilled, and compacted in 8-inch lifts paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of 4 inches and 2-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patches through one winter, National Grid must return the following spring to perform permanent trench repairs on two sending pits. The permanent patches shall be a minimum of 12 feet wide and 1 and 1/2 inches. Tac coat should be applied to milled surfaces and joints prior to paving. Finished joints should be treated with a rubberized asphalt sealer. All pavement markings disturbed by the roadwork should be replaced in kind to be coordinated with the Engineering Division. We also recommend that the following requirements be added to the permit if it is to be granted. National Grid must arrange a pre-construction meeting with Braintree DPW, the Braintree Police, to review utility corridor assignment and traffic controls during the work. The new gas main must not encroach on any existing utilities. No contractor is authorized to close any street or to close direction of travel to facilitate their work without the direct, without the authorization from the Director of the Department of Public Works or the Highway Superintendent. The Chief of Police can also authorize a closure for a police or fire emergency. Construction zone traffic safety issues are to be addressed by using appropriate traffic control signs and devices and the use of police officers for traffic control to safely guide traffic through the work zone. If a closure is authorized by the DPW, it shall not be implemented until signs and police officers where needed are properly in place in conformity with the contractors, engineer, and approved by the DPW and Police Department.
I have a motion by Council Barrica. Do I have a second? I have a second by Council Flaherty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Moving on to 24057, National Grid petition, 10-348 Common Street, 935 Summit Ave. Are taking up any action relative thereto? Again, this is renumbered from an initial filing of 24047. I would refer to Council Flaherty, Chairwoman of the Committee in the Department of Public Works, for recommendation on 24057.
The Committee on the Department of Public Works met earlier this evening and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council on Order 24057.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Would anyone from the mayor's office or DPW like to speak on this order? Seeing none. Any council members like to speak or comment on this?
I just have one question.
Council Barrica.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, President Ringus. I have one question. The conflicted Dove Circle, can someone just explain what that is? It looks like it's an underground distribution line. What happens with that? I'm just curious.
Thank you. Good evening to the council. The, so the Braintree Electric Light Department does just want to make National Grid aware that there is an underground electric line in the vicinity of some of the work. So what that often entails is that when National Grid's crews are working in that area around Beld's infrastructure, that they have an inspector on site to oversee the work.
Awesome. Thank you. That makes a lot of sense. I appreciate that explanation.
Thank you very much. Anything further, Council Barrica?
No, thank you very much.
Anything else from members of the council? Seeing none. Do I have a motion as to Order 24057?
Motion to grant National Grid permission as part of BSMN RPL program. National Grid recommends the relay of approximately 3,200 feet of 6-inch coated steel, 1955, 1956, 1960, approximately 20 feet of 6-inch plastic, 2009, approximately 70 feet of 6-inch plastic, 1987, approximately 1,105 feet of 6-inch coated steel, 1955, 1956, with approximately 4,395 feet of 8-inch plastic in Common Street from the intersection of Washington Street at number 10 Common Street to the existing 6-inch plastic, 1995, at number 348 Common Street, approximately 245 feet of 2-inch coated steel, 1964, with approximately 200, 245 feet of 2-inch plastic in Summit Ave. From number 9 Summit Ave. to the end of Main at number 35 Summit Ave. Approximately 15 feet of 2-inch 60 plastic, 2004, with approximately 30 feet of 2-inch plastic in the intersection of Common Street and Dove Circle from Common Street to the existing 2-inch plastic, 2004, in Dove Circle, approximately 380 feet of 2-inch coated steel, 1964, with approximately 380 feet of 2-inch plastic in Worthington Circle from Common Street to existing 2-inch plastic, 2015, at number 72 Worthington Circle. Approximately 30 feet of number 2, of 2-inch coated steel, 1955, DBRA 0007, with approximately 30 feet of 2-inch plastic in the intersection of Common Street and Cherry Street from Common Street to the existing 2-inch plastic, 2023, at number 59 Cherry Street, approximately 45 inch, 45 feet of 2-inch coated steel, 1955, with approximately 45 feet of 2-inch plastic in the intersection of Common Street and Dickerman Lane from Common Street to the existing 2-inch plastic, 2011, approximately 30 feet of 2-inch coated steel, 1955, with approximately 30 feet of 2-inch plastic in the intersection of Common Street and Cavanaugh Road from Common Street to the existing 2-inch plastic, 2004, in Cavanaugh Road, and approximately 60 feet of 2-inch coated steel, 1955, approximately 10 feet of 1 and 1/2 inch coated steel, 1986, approximately 200 feet of 1.25 inch plastic, 1985, and approximately 10 feet of 1.5 inch coated steel, 1988, with approximately 280 feet of 2-inch plastic in the intersection of Common Street and Staten Road from Common Street to the existing 2-inch plastic, 1988, in Staten Road with staff recommendations. You're not going to find that in the library. Okay. Beld, here are the recommendations. Beld. Beld has no conflicts with the locations stated below. One, 348 Common Street to Washington Street. Two, Summit Ave. Three, Worthington Circle. Four, Common Street to Cherry Street. Five, Dickerman Lane. Six, Cavanaugh Road. Seven, Staten Road. Conflict. One Dove Circle has 13.8 KV underground system feeding these homes. Please see the attached photo. DPW. The DPW has reviewed the subject petition and accompanying plans to relay gas mains, Summit Ave., as well as portions of Common Street, Worthington Circle, and Staten Road. The approximate limits of the work are as follows. Summit Ave., 245 feet from Common Street to House number 35 Summit Ave. Common Street, 4,400 feet from Summit Ave. to Washington Street. Worthington Circle West, 380 feet from Common Street to House number 70. Staten Avenue, 280 feet from the Common Street to House number 15. The work is being proposed as part of a program to eliminate aging gas infrastructure, particularly along roadways where the town of Braintree has pending roadway improvements. The DPW has planned work to resurface the roadway and sidewalks along Common Street in the coming years. The pavement on Summit Ave., Worthington Circle, and Staten Ave. is in good condition, although not under moratorium restriction. As such, the DPW recommends that if the petition is approved, it contain the following conditions. Temporary patches shall be placed immediately after the work. Street excavation should be saw-cut, backfilled, and compacted in 8-inch lifts paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of 4 inches and 2-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patches through one winter, National Grid must return the following spring to perform permanent trench repairs on all disturbed roadway segments. The permanent patch on Common Street should be a 4-foot-wide mill and overlay. The permanent patch on Worthington Circle and Staten Avenue should be an 8-foot-wide mill and overlay. The permanent patch on Summit Avenue shall be a full-width mill and overlay, approximately 12 feet wide. All mill and overlays should be 1 and 1/2 inch in depth, and if the edge of the permanent patch falls within 2 feet of the roadway gutter, the patch should be extended completely to the roadway edge. Tac coat should be applied to milled surfaces and joints prior to paving. Finished joints should be treated with a rubberized asphalt sealer. All pavement markings and traffic detection loops disturbed by the roadwork should be replaced in kind to be coordinated with the Engineering Division. We also recommend that the following requirements be added to the permit if it is to be granted. National Grid must arrange a pre-construction meeting with the Braintree DPW and the Braintree Police to review utility corridor assignment and traffic controls during the work. The new gas mains must not encroach on any existing utilities. No contractor is authorized to close any street or to close a direction of travel to facilitate their work without authorization from the Director of the Department of Public Works or the Highway Superintendent. The Chief of Police can also authorize a closure for a police or fire emergency. Construction zone traffic safety issues are to be addressed by using appropriate traffic control signs and devices and the use of police officers for traffic control to safely guide traffic through the work zone. If a closure is authorized by the DPW, it shall not be implemented until signs and police officers where needed are properly placed in conformity with the written plan prepared by the contractors, engineer, and approved by the DPW and the Police Department. So moved.
Did everyone get that? Could you read it again if you want? We have a motion by Council Barrica. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Flaherty. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Moving on to new business, we do have a same-night action request. This is under Order 24052, National Grid petition, 116 Hawthorne Road, or take up any action relative thereto. As this is a request of same-night action, if a councillor was to object, it would get, we would not be able to entertain it. Is there any councillor who objects to same-night action on Order 24052? Seeing none, I would ask some, if there's anyone who could give us an update on this petition. I know that in attendance, we do have Mary Meloni from our National Grid representative, Jim Arseneault from the DPW, as well as, I'm going to butcher this, but Peter Sifficello from 116 Hawthorne Road.
Good evening, councilors. National Grid is requesting permission to go into a Braintree road that is under moratorium. The road is 116 Hawthorne Road in Braintree. The street is currently under moratorium with the town of Braintree until 2025. And the resident, Israel Barosa, did a home energy audit with Mass Save, and the homeowner who has currently oil system failed and with that, applied for a gas service. And then after everything was completed, discovered that the road was under moratorium. So it's kind of a hardship for National Grid. And we just, and the homeowner, I was told, has already paid for the pavement, the, the resurfacing that would take place on the street.
Thank you. My also, my understanding is with the oil system being failed, the resident also doesn't currently have heat, and we're approaching.
Yes, they don't have heat. No, that's correct.
Would anyone else from DPW like to speak, or the mayor's office like to speak on this?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. John Thompson, Assistant DPW Director. Just one correction to something that Mary had mentioned. The roadway was resurfaced in 2022, so it's currently under the excavation moratorium until 2027. But I did also prepare some recommendations with regards to the restoration of the road, and I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from members of the council? Council Reynolds, the District Two councillor.
Appreciate that. So we have had these types of situations in the past, and you have found that generally speaking, although this is not what we would like to do because of the moratorium of the road just being built, this definitely falls into a special situation of an exception. It's my understanding also that the Sifficellos are, have a small child as well. So with the onset of colder weather, cooler nights as in this evening, I greatly appreciate the consideration of the council and of the DPW to work along with the gas company and the resident on this. Have you found, have you found there any particular challenges to doing this type of work so soon after the original overlays?
Not really, no. So the, sorry.
Your own strength.
The repair methods that we do recommend do work fairly well, and what usually ends up happening is that does end up being an extra cost for the homeowner to have the work prepared, to have the work performed. But we have found that if done correctly, and we do oversee National Grid when they do the work, that it, that it does work out well.
Terrific. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Flaherty.
In a case like this, just so I understand, it is customary for the applicant to bear the cost of the road repairs? Is that so?
That is typically correct, yes. National Grid usually passes the cost off to the customer.
Okay, so I have some, some questions for the applicant then.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Peter Sifficello.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. I really appreciate your time. I know it takes a while for us to like soldier through a lot of other things before we get to this item, and I'm grateful for your patience. I do want to make sure you understand that there are very specific ways that the road must be repaired. So just for your understanding, it says, "A temporary patch shall be placed immediately after the work. The street excavation gets saw-cut, backfilled, and compacted in 2-inch," sorry, in 8-inch lifts paved to match the existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of 4 inches in 2-inch lifts to match the existing street grade." So this road was very recently paved, and that work is done in order to ensure that it remains smooth for, after the work has been done. And then after maintaining the temporary patch through one winter, so this is a multi-phased project. "A permanent patch shall be placed the following May. The permanent patch should be a 15-foot-long milled patch from curb to crown with 2 inches of asphalt top course machine laid. Tac coat should be applied to milled surfaces and joints prior to paving. Finished joints should be treated with infrared or with rubberized asphalt sealer." Have you reviewed these details with people in preparation for this project?
I've been dealing with National Grid on this. Ariel Lyons is my point of contact, and she's been very helpful in dealing, liaising with the town and all these details.
Okay. And do you understand the costs associated with this work?
Yes. I've actually already provided rendered payment to National Grid for both, both aspects.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think that cases like this are easy to understand and easy to support as long as the resident understands that, you know, how it works and the costs associated with it. So I'm happy to support this, and I'm, I'm glad, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anything further from members of the council? Seeing none. Thank you again for coming out tonight. This is, to me, this is sort of one of those easier ones. Obviously, we need to get heat to you and your, your family. So with that said, is there a motion?
There is, Mr. President, and this has no named pipes, so it is going to go a lot easier. The motion is to grant National Grid petition, permission rather, to open the road at 116 Hawthorne Road, Braintree, number 1604657, to install a new gas service with staff recommendations. Beld. Beld has no conflicts with the location. DPW. The DPW has reviewed the subject petition for the installation of a gas service to resident at 116 Hawthorne Road. Hawthorne Road is currently under excavation moratorium enacted by the town council in 2015, having been resurfaced in 2022. For transverse service trenches, the moratorium is five years. Therefore, any excavation made prior to 2027 requires waiving of the ordinance. The gas main is located on the same side of Hawthorne Road as the property, approximately 4 feet from the granite curb. There is no gas main on Home Park Road to which the property is adjacent. If the council does elect to waive the excavation ordinance, the DPW recommends that the petition be granted with the following conditions. "A temporary patch shall be placed immediately after the work. The street excavation should be saw-cut, backfilled, and compacted in 8-inch lifts paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of 4 inches and 2-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patch through one winter, a permanent..." street grade. After maintaining the temporary patch through one winter, a permanent patch shall be placed the following May. The permanent patch should be 15-foot-long milled patch from curb to crown with two inches of asphalt top, top course machine-laid. Tac coat should be applied to milled surfaces and joints prior to paving. Finished joints should be treated with infrared or rubberized asphalt sealer. DPW also recommends that the following requirements be added to the permit if it is to be granted. No contractor is authorized to close any street or to close a direction of travel to facilitate their work without authorization from the Director of the Department of Public Works or the Highway Superintendent. The Chief of Police can also authorize a closure for a police or fire emergency. Construction zone traffic safety issues are to be addressed by using the appropriate traffic control signs and devices and the use of police officers for traffic control to safely guide traffic through the work zone. If a closure is authorized by the DPW, it shall not be implemented until signs and police officers, where needed, are properly in place in the written plan prepared by the contractors, engineer, and approved by the DPW and Police Department. So moved.
Thank you, Council Barricka. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Council Barricka, a second by Council Flaherty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. With that said, also under new business, I am looking for a motion to refer to the Committee of Ways and Means, Order 24053, Mayor, authorization for costs of final settlement of Wyko versus town of Braintree at all, or take up any action relative there too.
So moved.
I have a motion by Council Barricka for the referral. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Council Flaherty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Anything further from any councilors tonight? Seeing none, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, October 15th of 2020, 2024. Thank you to BKAM for televising, Bill Needham and Jerry Comack. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that, have a great night, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.